Thank you. I will call to order the March 23rd, 2023, meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. With that, I will do roll call. And so I see alternate Director Ku is here.
Here, thank you.
Director Eisenberg.
Here.
Director Combe is here.
Director Abrika.
Here.
And Director Pine.
Here.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? None? Okay, and so then we'll we'll call for public comment, right, on approval of the agenda? And so if anyone would like to provide public comment on that, can they acknowledge that? Okay.
We don't have anyone online who has raised their hands and no one here.
Okay, cool, so then we'll close a public comment on approval of the agenda and I'll open it up to a motion or any comments or additions.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right. Okay, we have a motion from Director Abrika and a second from Director Eisenberg to approve the agenda.
Alvin Becker?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes for March 9th, 2023, special board meeting. We'll open it up for public comment on our we're gonna do something before then, maybe.
Yeah, so I was told that staff should make a I just want to do a small correction to the table that I inserted in the minutes. I want to clarify that the trees are planned to be removed in the table and they have not been removed as stated on the table.
All right, okay, so that was a clarification from Senior Project Director Tess Byler. And so, and with that, I will call for any public comment on the approval of the meeting minutes. All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the dais and open it up to a motion for approval of the I will make the motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 9th. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Director Pine. All those in favor saying?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no opposition? Cool, so then we will go on to public comment. Under public comment, individuals may speak on non-agendized on a non-agendized topic for up to three minutes. So opening it up to any public comment.
Would any member of the public like to make a comment at this time?
No thanks.
No one present, anyone online? I have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go on to the action items. There are action items A and action items B. Do we, remind me, do we do public comment for both A and B at once? Or should we separate that out?
Please separate them.
Okay, separate, okay, all right. Okay, and I think we have another.
Yes, Tess Byler again, just one more clarifying comment on Agenda Item 5A. I just wanted to let the board be aware that HDR worked on the applications for both FEMA BRIC for Menlo Park as well as the East Palo Alto HMGP, knowing that they were not eligible to bid on that work. So this MSA approval is not like a carte blanche for HDR to be working on this project forever. It will get us through SEQA and that's the purpose of it.
All right, thank you for that additional clarification on Agenda Item 5A. And so 5A is review and consider accepting the updated master service agreement with HDR Inc. for services related to the Safer Bay project and adopt resolution 23-03-23-A. So we're going to go to the staff report and then see if there's any clarifying questions from the dais and then we'll go to public comment and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and then open it up to a motion.
So the master service agreement and Tess may chime in here if she has any additional details to provide. The master service agreement goes back to the original scoping of SEQA for the Safer Bay project. In the intervening years, we have both seen cost increases to the project as well as additional funding opportunities. In particular, recently, we have received first $1 million, then $3.98 million from the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, which will help us complete SEQA for the entire project to a programmatic level and project level SEQA for a significant portion in East Palo Alto and preliminary designs to support the SEQA work. The master service agreement needs to be updated to reflect both the available funding that squares with what we will be tasking HDR to complete for us as well as the adjusted scope to clarify exactly the services and functions they will be providing within the framework of the available funding. Happy to take any further questions.
Director Eisenberg.
Did you, yeah, did you provide for us a copy of that agreement and the amendment? I can't find it in the packet, but maybe I'm not looking in the right place.
It was not included.
We can provide for your information. In the past, that master service agreement, when it had been adjusted, had not been provided. So we were just following past precedent. Happy to provide that master service agreement. It specifies tasks that HDR should follow that cover the tasks provided by the funding so that we are now just reconciling what we have in the funding scope with what the master service agreement enables in terms of overall spend and specific tasks.
So I personally don't feel like I can abide by my fiduciary duty without at least looking at it. I don't expect to see anything problematic in it, but I can't, I can't, and I encourage others really not to approve anything without seeing it. Not that I don't trust you, you know, I do trust you. It's just, you know, I've been a lawyer for 30 years and that's like one of like the 10 commandments, you know, don't approve agreement without at least eyeballing it, you know? So again, it's not a matter of lack of trust or, you know, expecting anything wrong with it. I just feel I need to at least look at it. The amendment should be short, I imagine, if it's just if it's just changing the amount of money.
So the way the master service agreement works is that it's this overall master service agreement with the task orders. Each of the task orders is described in and they have a work program for those those we have brought to the board for approval. And so the master service agreement is actually pretty short and happy to provide it if needed.
Yeah, I think it's good to do.
Yeah, through the chair, I would say, yeah, it seems that definitely we do have access to all the documents that we should or we do. And I know, at least for me, in the past, at times I have requested copies of those agreements or at least to go look at them. They're there. So I think whatever we decide, but I think it is if people want copies of that, then they should be made available. But they are always available and I do agree. I think sometimes you have to read the whole thing to see if there are any, anything you have questions on, so. And yeah, anyway, I'll just say that, that I think it is up to each board member to request documents or, you know, if they're not huge, super thick documents, we should just get them and then the ones that are so big, we can access them or let us know about it, so I'm fine.
Did you have something?
Well, yeah, I guess I was just gonna say it is is just kind of what was already said. It is kind of unusual for me to be asked to approve something that isn't even linked, you know, in the agenda. Again, it's not a matter of not trusting, you know? Because I'm brand new, I haven't had the pleasure of already seeing it. And I really feel stickler to the Brown Act rule that, you know, directors, you know, legislative bodies like ours, you know, fiduciary bodies like ours, we really should only access information that is provided to the public at the same time.
Would, at the board's pleasure, would we like to carry this over to the April agenda?
Well, since this is agendaized, I do want to go through the cycle of opening it up for a public comment and then we'll bring it back to board discussion and then go from there. Okay, so I'll call for a public comment. Is there any public comment on Agenda Item 5A?
We have no one who has requested to speak on this agenda at this time.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the dais for board discussion. And there can be, again, since this is a fully agendized item, there can be a motion to continue it, a motion to approve or any other action.
I move to continue it next week, next meeting, with the expectation that we'd approve it.
And I might just add one thing is that we're not asking you to approve the master service agreement. What we're asking is to just make it larger, you know? So that's, that's the ask.
I still, just because we don't even have that, that one page before us.
Okay, so there is a motion to continue this item.
Is there a second, if you already approved?
You know, I'll second it for, I guess, you know, purposes of the, for the good of the order for all members. I do need, you know, maybe that we have to establish some procedures or some understanding when it comes to documents. Otherwise, it's gonna happen every time. And I'm not, like I said, I think I do agree with the concept and the practice of people making decisions and the public having access to those documents. And so I think we just need to define which ones, you know, I anyway, I'll just leave it at that. So I, I'm okay continuing it, but we may need to establish something. Otherwise, we're gonna be in this place every single meeting and I don't want to be in that situation because it's kind of becomes theoretically absurd and I don't think the public wants to be watching us just do dramas instead of moving the agenda, so. But, you know, I'm okay with continuing the whole thing and making those documents available.
Yeah. Director Pine.
I just wanted to ask staff if there's any time urgency on this matter or whether we could postpone a month is.
Yeah, I think it's okay to postpone it. I am waiting on the work program from HDR and we're still got a couple of assumptions on the design pieces. So the urgency is that, so we're working on the last task order four already that the board approved, so the urgency, we could wait till next month.
Okay, so then we do have a motion to continue from Director Eisenberg and a second from Director Abrika. And so I can just go down the line, Miko, do you, you prefer? I'll go, Director Ku.
I just wanted to say that, you know, since there is an amount increase here, that perhaps it is better for everybody to have read and seen the documents. Thank you.
So is that a vote in favor of the motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay. Director Eisenberg.
Aye.
Director Abrika.
Yeah.
Director Pine.
Aye.
And also vote aye, and so that's unanimous on the motion to continue.
And thank you, board members, for the clarification and the direction. We will be more fastidious about including all appropriate documentation going forward. Thank you.
Okay, cool. So with that, we'll move on to Action Item 5B, Review and Consider Recommending Approval of the Updates to the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority Members Agreement, the second amended and restated agreement and adopted resolution And so with that, we'll go to the staff or staff report.
Great. I'm very glad that we have Lori, our legal colleague here to support this effort. It's with great pleasure and relief after two years of diligent work on the part of our member colleagues. This amended agreement has been through several rounds of diligent, thoughtful, thorough review amongst technical staff and legal staff at all of our member agencies. Everyone contributed very significantly to the improvements. We have reached the point where we have full consensus among all technical and all legal counsel from all members. The changes that you see in the, what I call the spaghetti rainbow noodle mess of the marked up document reflect changes that modernize the document. Having been more than 20 years since the full review of the document, there are many archaic conventions. There's some updates to just sort of general clauses that many local government contracts or agreements typically now include. There were some adjustments to, I think that the staff report probably describes all of those in a summary that I'm probably not remembering off the top of my head, but clarifications about such things as the manner in which the JPA might go forward with land acquisition, the clarifying when one shoreline has an alternate, from which organization that alternate might be drawn to make sure that we don't have a San Mateo County jurisdiction that can have duplicative representation on the board. And a number of other updates that make sure that we are comporting with best practice and our practices are clear. So with that, I hope you have had a chance to review the clean copy and if you have any suggestions, we are still obviously very happy to see input on potential improvements. But if you are content with the current version, this will go before each of your member organizations for their ratification. Once they're all ratified, that will be the new standing agreement. Our plan is to take this every two years to our legal colleagues and technical colleagues and our members for just a, you know, let's make sure we do this. We'll do a lather, rinse and repeat. If we do this every two years, then any changes that are necessary are going to be far less substantive and will not take a two-year cycle of review. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bruce, for that report. So bringing it back to the dais for clarifying questions. Director Ku.
Yes, thank you for reading the signal. So once this one here, if the board agrees to it, it's gonna send back to each of our own agencies so that they can review through the legal department. Is that the process and then does it come back or that's it?
Each legal department in each of your member and in each of your agencies has already reviewed and has already given us or indicated their concurrence with this version. You may choose to bring it to them again because it's going to be an agenda item on your, on your city council or board packet. And the course of however that is reviewed and then placed on your agenda is your organization's process to follow. But this is the document that will go to your body for ratification unless any of you here suggest that there should be additional changes.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. Most important thing was that it has already involved their participation in developing what we have in front of us.
Extensively.
Thank you.
We've had several working group meetings with the legal council for all of the member entities, so.
Director Eisenberg.
Sorry, this is like a me question and I'm not opposed to this. I appreciate you running past the legal. But as a me question, do you mind just sharing? And you can share by email later. I don't know if it's public information or not, like who reviewed it? Because I'm so new to Valley Water. If you don't mind, just if you could share who reviewed it at Valley Water.
The list of people, if I recall all the names correctly, and I may not, at Valley Water included.
Leslie Orta.
Leslie Orta. Bhavani Yaraputu, Maru Tulamuru, Jessica. Jessica Collins. I believe Melanie Richardson took a look at it. And to the extent of my knowledge, that's.
That's a pretty impressive crew.
Everyone at Valley Water who took a look.
That's awesome. Yeah, I assume I was too early to get this in draft or anything, so. And I certainly don't want to open something that's been very well vetted. So, okay, that's really helpful, thank you.
You're welcome. I do see that Bhavani Yaraputu is in the electronic audience, is in the Zoom audience. I don't know if she has any additional comment, but I do notice that she is available.
I'm sure she would raise her hand if she did. I trust her tremendously, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Abrika.
Yeah, I just wanted, yeah, this has been a long time coming and, but it does remind me of the, yeah, I guess the process or procedure. So we've all been talking about stuff like this and that is that when something gets to us of this nature, all the respective entities with their respective staff have gone through it. So, you know, not only the legal people, but the city manager people, whoever they assign. And I also try to remind even our staff or myself, they need to tell me as a representative what they found or didn't find or what they think or don't think. And so once that has been done and vetted, when it comes to us, like in this case, you know, I may be smarter than all of them and come up with something else, but probably not because it's gone through that vetting process. And then the last step still is that this will go back to each entity and they'll still have a chance to say, we reject it. Okay, well then, you know what? I don't want to discuss it, go back and work on it and bring us something. So generally, that's been the process, whether it involves money or anything that involves all the entities. We do not make the final decision, but the staff goes through that process. And so just as you explained, I think it's been vetted by everybody and if they didn't bring something up at that point, then you know what? Deal with your staff, I'll deal with my staff because they should have communicated that to me as the representative. And now it'll go back to everybody, so they will ask the same questions. But it's just a reminder of how we operate and as our council also mentioned, they were involved in that process too because they had to sift through the staff to bring it to us.
Yeah, in East Palo Alto, we had a robust dialogue.
No, like I said, I just assumed that and if they don't, then I'm gonna call it.
I think you've got a good crew there. They were very helpful.
Also, it's on you to invite people, you know, not leave anybody out, which I assume you don't, but, you know, I think that process is very important for people to understand how we get to certain decision points that we're not just, you know, doing on the, whatever you call it. My English gets lost in the afternoon. Okay, thank you.
Your English is, it's pretty good. Director Pine, is there anything that you want to add?
I think I know the answer to this question, but the San Francisco JPA itself is not a signature to this agreement. It's the five member.
No, sir, it is not.
Right, right. So today we are just really authorized.
Yeah, this is Anwar Miza, I'm representing East Palo Alto today. Sorry, actually, I introduced myself, I was waiting. So Hamzah Zavid is not present today, so I wouldn't be able to say Zavid.
Okay, sir, sorry, can you, we'll get to a public comment portion and would be more than happy to hear from you at that time.
So our action today is really authorizing the release of this document to the five member agencies for their review and Zoom approval.
Yes, that's right.
All right, thanks for that clarification, Director Pine. Okay, with that, we'll open it up to public comment. And so if there is anyone who'd like to provide public comment, please acknowledge yourself if you're on the Zoom, you can raise your hand or if you're in person, you can come to the lectern.
Would anyone like to make a public comment on this agenda item? I have no requests and no hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the dais for any additional board discussion or to entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the, is this at the resolution number 2303-23C? Is that correct? The amended JPA member agreement.
Cool, thank you. We have a motion of approval from Director Eisenberg. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a second from Director Pine. And so then I will go down the dais. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Ku.
Just one little thing, on packet, I'm sorry, it's not packet, it's actually page 19 where it has the board and staff. My last name is spelt wrong. If that could be corrected, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
But it is, if you're taking votes, I'm a yes.
Okay, yes, I, and even though her name is misspelt, she is voting yes. So that is, that is, that is political courage. So Director Ku was a yes, Director Eisenberg.
Yes.
Director Abrika.
Yes.
Director Pine.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, and so the approval is unanimous. All right.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you all for your support. I'm so glad this is done.
Yeah, I know, I know it was a long time coming and lots of lawyers were involved and so, which probably speaks to the long time coming. But yeah, thanks. Cool, all right, with that, we'll go into information items. So 6A Board Handbook. And so we'll do the staff report on this item and then go to the dais for any clarifying questions.
Great, thank you. This is an information item this year. There are no policy updates or any substantive updates in this particular board handbook update. The updates reflect our two new board members and updates to our board alternates as well as the correction of a few typographical errors. And thank you, Jerry Hearn, for pointing out yet some other typographical errors that we missed the first time around. With those updates, we will just make sure that each of you has an electronic copy. The intention of the board handbook, again, is just a brief reminder of board roles, board responsibilities, the background of the Joint Powers Authority, some of the more substantive agreements to which we are parties. So you have a handy reference book for the practices, programs, policies and helpful information about your role as a board member in this one handy, thick board handbook.
Cool, all right, are there any, thank you for that, that report. Are there any clarifying questions from the dais on 6A?
I guess I'll just ask, it is a, what do they call it? A work in progress, so it's not like, these are not laws, but I'm just asking that if at some, any point the board wants to change some of the things in the handbook, we can do that.
Absolutely, at any time.
I was asking that to verify that that is the case.
There's no schedule, there's no timeline or deadline. If anyone would like to provide helpful input, we can update this anytime. In fact, with the ratification of the members agreement, it will be updated with that as an appendix.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, you know, as we read through it, I mean, I I do like reading handbooks as long as they're not too long, but, you know, if we have a chance to read and find something that, you know, we can bring back to the board to say, well, maybe we should do it a different way or something, so that's always open.
Okay, cool, all right, we'll open it up for public comment on item 6A.
Would anyone like to make a public comment on Agenda Item 6A? I have no request to speak at this time.
All right, thank you. So we'll bring it back to the dais and there's no action here and I don't, I'll give the board one last opportunity. Director Ku.
I just want to ask, the winter emergency preparedness, is this part of the handbook? On page 18, I think?
I think so. There's some brief information about what we do.
Okay, and so it says preparedness, but I see it's mostly about monitoring and the alert system. So I also wanted to find out what is going to happen with the, I think, the website where the map is? Is that being updated? Is that going to be replaced or is not going to?
We are currently reevaluating the use of that integrated Google map. There are a number of, I am not a tech person, so I, you know, there are API links from our website to a number of other data sources to that map. When we updated our website to this more modern version, we learned that finding and fixing all of those APIs was going to cost us about $30,000 in some tech person's time to do that. That integrated Google map with the three dots that show where flooding may be imminent isn't utilized by very many people. So at this moment, a $30,000 investment for something that isn't utilized very much doesn't seem like a prudent investment. However, there may be some other kinds of notification tools or visual tools or just a more prominent placement perhaps of Palo Alto's own creek monitoring site, which is very useful, would be a solution. So in terms of the preparedness side, we collaborate with Valley Water every year for the creation of and promulgation of their winter preparedness mailer for the Santa Clara County side. And then an electronic copy is provided to both East Palo Alto and Menlo Park for their distribution. We also meet with the multi-agency coordinating committee and have early season exercises. So rules, responsibilities, tasks, troubleshooting are all kind of ironed out before the winter storms hit. That's been very effective. And then we just provide website and email updates through our newsletter to encourage people to prepare themselves for the winter and know what to do, where sandbag locations are. Anything else that you suggested? Okay, so, but again, the cost for the API correction seemed pretty expensive for what it was worth.
Does Menlo Park and East Palo Alto also have gauges to their creeks and monitoring sites?
I think, I saw that Director Public Works from Menlo Park. I don't think we do. And I think on the Menlo Park's website, we link out to the Palo Alto.
Oh, okay.
I think if someone on Menlo Park staff wants to correct me, feel free to.
That's probably the Pope Chaucer Bridge, right?
Yeah.
So we would share that gauge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just said a little bit of the history, because I think that's probably the most critical piece of information, the one that comes out of the Palo Alto Creek Monitor. And the reason is that, you know, Palo Alto sort of agreed to take that on, but it was a joint effort in the sense that we discovered in 2012 or 2010, when last time that, at least, we had a break in East Palo Alto. And I think Pope Chaucer also did something that we needed to update the measuring, whatever it's called, the monitoring, because people said, these are the experts saying, if we had had an idea that so much water was coming down, we could have given like 30 minutes to say, you got 30 minutes. And that's the value of that, which I clearly remember being on 101 in West Bay Shore and people coming around from Water District and everybody. And we're saying like, is this far a few inches from the top? But it's not raining anymore. It's, oh, good, you know, it's going to start going down. Little did we know that there's a big cloud up on the mountains dumping all kinds of water, and we weren't able to monitor that. So I think at this point, it's not that each city needs a monitor in a way, that we're sort of relying on Palo Alto collectively, because that was the agreement, that Palo Alto would monitor that. And then, no, I'm just saying, and then that information, we get that, everybody gets that information. It's probably the most valuable one that I have found, because should it happen again, that they could say, hey, in 30 minutes, probably it's going to hit down there massively. So then all of us know. But, I mean, I don't know if each city needs to have a monitor. I don't.
Oh, no. I really appreciate the institutional history that you're providing. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that's the value of us being together, because, you know, sometimes Palo Alto can do that. Other times, it's Valley Water who takes on the, or San Mateo, or, you know, City, Menlo Park, VPA. We can help in some ways too. But that particular incident, I remember, I remember the fire chief saying, if we had known and, you know, would have been good to know. And Len actually even said, talked to Len, you know, as it was happening and really didn't have that information, which is like, if we had had that, it was, hey, chief, looks like in 30 minutes, stuff's going to happen, so be ready, you know?
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, Palo Alto, for providing that service. No, seriously.
Yeah, I think the question is, is that should we be reimbursing Palo Alto to some degree? But you say, you're saying that it all sort of balances out in the end. Different, the different municipalities and stakeholders provide different things.
So, okay, I think. Just to give some more basic information, all of the gauges in the upper watershed are owned by different entities. We, the JPA, own several rain gauges. Most of the flow gauges are owned and operated by Stanford. And so we all have the benefit of that collective information. And the gauges on the Palo Alto website are a combination of different monitors owned by different entities. And we all kind of work together to coordinate the communications.
Okay, Director Eisenberg.
So, thank you for this. So I completely agree with my colleagues that if other places are doing this more effectively than we are, that it makes sense to link to them. And I guess I would also add to that, that if, you know, well, first, as the chair said, to the extent that it does make sense for us to reimburse Palo Alto, you know, I think that could be something the board could consider if appropriate. I don't know really how that works. I mean, I know things kind of wash out in the end, but, you know, I'm brand new to this. I just want to feel like I'm not taking advantage of other agencies, especially from, and in cities, especially from one that does have, and real quick, mayor too, like, you know, because this doesn't involve you, I want to say also that if there's, if there are improvements to what Palo Alto does that would cost money, that would maybe assist with these kind of real-time notifications that Director, you know, my colleagues have pointed out, that maybe is something that we could chip in the cost of. You know, and full disclosure, I live in Palo Alto, so, you know, I do speak from a point of view of bias. And similarly, if there's anything more you need from Valley Water, I would appreciate being told that too. We want to be a good team member and participate as we can to, you know, demonstrate we're in this together and want to help.
I wasn't suggesting a reimbursement of any sort.
I, the mayor and director was not, you know, not asking for that. But, you know, as a child of a, you know, retired judge who had to race to the cashier to always pay for every family dinner, not letting anyone else pay, it is like, it would be a violation of my DNA to not say we should pay for this. So, yeah, but whatever is appropriate is all I'm saying. And I have no information and no context.
Kevin.
Yeah, just to acknowledge the contributions that Valley Water does make. They don't operate Palo Alto's website, but the access to their, to Valley Water hydrologists during rain events is invaluable. So Valley Water does pull their own weight for sure.
And of course, I didn't mean to disparage my colleagues, you know, my colleagues, the staff. I know they're fantastic and truly exceptional in many ways, so I don't. So I'm just saying, if there's anything else needed, I know that they all are here to help.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, because this was put in place right when I started here, the early warning system, it's the background data that we provide to San Mateo County, Palo Alto, and Valley Water. So all we're really talking about is that map that used to be a public interface. The background data is still around. We maintain it. And it goes to our member agencies and we will continue that function. So talking about two different things.
Cool, thanks. And just to be clear, when I, because I did mention reimbursement, I was thinking in the context of the member agencies. I was not, the JPA, I'm not putting that up for reimbursing anyone for anything. We're a small agency with a very limited budget. And so, but, yeah, okay. Well, I think, again, this is an action item. It was an informational item. And so, thank you for the additional information. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6B, which is the executive director's report. And so I will turn it to Ms. Bruce to provide her report.
I just have that one. Should I do the correction now?
Sure, sure. Tess has got one.
It's a minor correction.
Current event.
Yeah, when we put the report together, it was before the 18th. We had a shoreline creek cleanup and invasive species removal on the 18th. And I just wanted to let the board know that this is one of four events that we've partnered with Grassroots Ecology, and we will have three more in the coming year.
Thank you.
Yeah, the director's report is always a moving target. When we finish it before we have to post, things happen. So glad to provide you the current information. I'm just going to breeze through this very quickly, since we met very recently. There's not a lot to share, and if you have any questions, please just chime in. So newsletters, websites, community events, shoreline cleanup, and our engagement with our members on the Stanford University Notice of Intent, Notice of Preparation continue. We are actively reaching out to about 500 people in our newsletter distribution list. And our website continues to increase in popularity, especially through these winter storm events. We've gotten more activity on our website than ever before. As requested by the board, our, the executive director's report includes some more specific information on committees of the board. And you can find that in the board handbook as well as here for your reference. As you know, banking has been an issue in the news lately, and we bank with First Republic Bank. Miko and I are watching this very closely. We've had a couple of conversations with our banking representative at First Republic Bank. Miko and I are coming up with a plan for what to do about protecting the JPA's assets. As you probably know, and as I learned yesterday, $250,000 is the level of FDAC insurance, not for a single account, but for a single account holder. So that puts our assets at some exposure. Miko and I are discussing ways of moving some of our not immediately needed assets to the LEAF account, which is our local agency investment fund, which is managed by the state, and opening different accounts at a different bank so that we proverbially don't have all of our eggs in one basket. We'll continue to update the board on our strategy and our approach to safeguarding the JPA's assets in these uncertain times. If any of you have any questions or input, I'd be grateful. And there are a number of follow-up items in the executive director's report with links and descriptions. And I hope those satisfactorily responded to questions and areas of interest that you, as board members or members of the public, may have had. And I think that concludes my report.
Cool. Thank you, Ms. Bruce, for that, that very thorough and efficient report. I'll bring it to the dais. Are there any clarifying questions?
I just want to thank you for responding to the questions I made at the last meeting. That's really helpful.
Our pleasure.
All right, well, seeing no other, I will now open it up for public comment on Agenda Item 6B, the executive director's report.
Would anyone like to make a public comment on Agenda Item, the executive director report, 6B? I have no request to speak at this time.
Right, thank you, Clerk Harris. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for one last round of comments. Director Abrica.
Yes. Yeah, on the section of, you know, responding to requests like the Rotary Club or other groups, I want to know, I think there is a heightened interest. And I don't know when the last time was, but I think it may be appropriate now to do presentations before each entity, as I know, it's done on some basis, but, you know, before the city councils and before the water in the county. Just because, you know, after a while, you start getting this feeling that everybody out there on the street knows except us electeds. And I'm not talking about myself, because that's part of my job here. But other people start hearing like, well, you know, you give a report to this club and that club and not to us. So I would suggest that, you know, contact each entity and so they can put it on the agenda for just an update and report on what the JPA is up to or, you know, what we're dealing with. So is that something, I mean, if the board is okay with that to? Is that a yes or?
That is very much a yes. It's on my do list. Absolutely, yeah. So I was invited to speak by the Rotary. So that was a presentation, just a quick overview of the history of the JPA and our projects. But a more, audience-appropriate update for the different councils and boards is absolutely on my do list and will happen soon.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, I think the sooner people find out that we want to do that, then.
Yep, absolutely.
Good idea.
Cool. Yeah, thank you for that suggestion, Director Abrica. So with that, seeing no other board comments, we'll, again, this is the executive director's report, so not an action item. So we'll close out this item and go on to Agenda Item 7, Board Announcements, Information Items and Requests. And again, this is informational only. I'll start it off with a couple of announcements. First, just to note that we got one of the highest level of water flow on Tuesday night at the Pope Chaucer Bridge. I think it got to 18.3 feet. You can correct, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, or Tess, but it got pretty high. And I was, I was out there and sort of want to give hats off to the public staff from both cities, certainly from Palo Alto and from Menlo Park. I think there were some police officers out there. I've seen lots of public works. And obviously, at one point, they had to bring in the backhoe and break down the fence again that I think we just rebuilt from the last flooding so that it could get access to the river and was there as it was, you know, plucking out things. And for any people who are local, you can go and see everything that it plucked down. And I think it's still there. It was at least there this morning. And so, again, hats off. And, yeah, I don't know who the operator of that backhoe was, but he was very skilled. And we were just sitting there, and then someone had registered that, like, oh, it's getting pretty high. And he was just, he just came up Chaucer out of nowhere, I mean, driving that thing like it was a Porsche. And then, like I said, put it in place to really make sure that there wasn't debris that was going to accumulate there. So, again, hats off to everyone. Now, hats off to someone, not for actions for one moment, but actions over a longer period of time, six years. Terry Senior Project Manager Tess Beiler, who is celebrating her six years, right, with the JPA as of 3/29, right? So it's coming up. But anyway, you know, hats off to you, to, you've certainly been here as long as I've been here. And I felt like I've been here a long time for all that you do and all the very important work that you've done in the past and will continue to do for us. And so I'll express that as the chair, but also leave it up to each individual board member talks or express their thanks for your longevity with the agency. Okay, with that, I will open it up to any board member announcements, requests, or informational items. Okay, Director Abrica. You can go, Director Abrica.
No, I do want to express a concern, and, you know, you mentioned how high the water came up, kind of a surprise in a certain way, but on the other hand, I think we probably can expect things. can expect things like this to happen more, but one, one big concern I have is some trees that are in the creek, that in my opinion are ready to fall, one in particular, because I live 300 yards from it, and I've been watching it for 42 years, huge eucalyptus tree by Newell Road on the bridge inside the creek, anyway, I've been sharing with people, because people have shared with me, too, that it, I think is ready to fall, and it needs to be taken out, and there's other trees that probably are in the same condition, around homes, and that particular tree is neighbors to two other big huge trees that were taken down, I assume they were on private property, because, or maybe Palo Alto did it, because it was on the sidewalk, probably for that reason, they were so tall, and one day I came back, because I go by there a lot, and all of a sudden, there are just piles of huge segments, it's like, wow, they took them down, and this one that is inside the creek has been bending like this, I've been watching it, and most recently, between, I think Palo Alto and East Palo Alto, they took off some branches on one side, so instead of leaning that way, now it leans a little more that way, but I'm looking down, not up, I'm looking down, because it's right inside the creek, the water has continued to go there, the more water that goes by there will eat away at the dirt, and, and that tree's gonna fall on, on the bridge, and I think that, I don't know who would be liable for that, but I, I, I'm really concerned now, because I, I went by there in Menlo Park, too, I looked at this afternoon, like, wow, and so, you know, with all due respect to the trees, but I really, I am concerned, to the point where, first time in my life in 42 years that I've lived around this tree, I now don't want to go across the bridge, and that bridge is used by pedestrians, bicycles, moms with little pushers, cars, trucks, animals, at night, probably, the cats go through, everybody goes through there, so I know, I'm just expressing that concern, because I don't want to wait until the project is done, where some trees that are probably not needed anyway, and they're gonna be taken down, and especially watching the news, hearing the news of so many tragedies that have happened, of trees that are just simply ready to fall, and they fall and they kill people, and so, you know, it, it's, yeah, it's just been this last two weeks that it has gotten to me, to the point where, you know, I tell my neighbors and they feel the same way, and I don't know what we can do, but at least I'm just bringing it to the attention.
Question?
Director Eisenberg?
Yeah, at, you know, as you know, I'm a certified tree hugger, but even if I weren't, I think it's a very valid question, we absolutely want to protect human lives, you know, and, and to a lesser extent, you know, property, but I, I assume that, I, I guess I would just want to have an arborist opine, as well as a structural engineer, before a tree is just removed, because there are, as, as we know, trees are, are essential towards stabilization of the ground, and if you remove too many trees, you know, you have, what else is it called, slide, landslides, you know, and, and it would, could potentially cause even more liability if people's, like, backyards start to fall into the creek and this and that, you know, that also could cause, could create a hazard for people, too, so with trees, I think you just really want to be very mindful, knowing that most about, most of the tree stuff goes on underground, you know, and that a lot of things they're doing is really important underground, you know, so we want to, that said, we want to keep people safe, so I, I agree that, you know, hopefully there's been a task force or a team or something looking into trees, seeking to maybe stabilize them, you know, as a, as a midway option before just removing them, you know, every tree does serve an important purpose, whether it's keeping, holding up the, the ground, or, you know, whether it's enabling water to fall down, so it doesn't, you know, to seep down, so it doesn't go across and flood people's homes, you know, I think trees are far more important to the ecosystem and to human safety than was understood in the past, so I guess I'm just saying, you know, but then again, we want to protect people, so I'm just saying, hopefully, engineer and an arborist would work to have the most appropriate response, you know, maybe just cutting down branches or stabilizing the tree, I assume that's going on.
Well, you know, let me take issue with this, I, I definitely agree that experts should look at it, but in my humble opinion, that tree is not stabilizing nothing, is ready to, it's, the roots have been eating away, it's on the mud, I don't see how that stabilizes anything, and, and, you know, it is a fact that trees are falling on people, and this particular one eventually will probably be taken out when the bridge is built, anybody who lives around there, if you live right around that tree, I don't think, I think you'd be worried that something should be done, so I, I, I take issue with, with the concept that, in this case, the tree, you know, should be protected and all of that, when, when.
I'm not saying that.
Well, please don't interrupt me, whatever you're saying, I did hear say that, you know, that's what I heard, interpreted that, that, you know, but anyway, we'll, we'll leave it at that, but I do agree that experts need to look at it and, and decide, you know, what, what to do, and I will talk to my neighbors again, say, see how they feel, they've already told me how they feel walking across there with that tree there, and so even that idea that people are now afraid, it's, it's not a good sign.
To clarify, I am saying that this should not be a political decision, whether to remove trees or not, this should be a decision based on science, and that is what I'm asking, and.
I just, but, I don't, I don't think.
To the extent someone is afraid.
Director Abrika was saying to make it a political decision, I, I think he was sharing about a concern of him and his neighbors about a tree.
Okay, I'm, I'm clarifying my position, and, and, and so my position is that it is, should be a decision made by science, and while I recognize that people might be afraid of things, throughout history in the world, people are sometimes afraid of things that are not scary, and that may be just a, and I'm not saying that if this tree is scary or not, I have no idea what's going on with this tree, but I'm just saying that, you know, maybe it can be looked into by, by scientists.
And no one has suggested otherwise, you've, you've, you have no idea what's going on with the tree, but you've commented a lot about it.
Well, I've commented that a board director should not decide the fate of a tree.
But, but I, I think this is a false scenario, no, no board director was trying to, he was sharing about a concern of him and his neighbors.
Right.
And, and I, I think that that, and, and, and bringing some visibility and speaking to that, and I think for us or his colleagues, I think the, the respectful thing to do would have been to have heard that and, and let that resonate, he did not say, I need to go out there and we need to take down that tree at this moment, what he said is that he wanted to share that story, he wanted to share the concern of him and his neighbors, and, and I think you responded, Director Eisenberg, with all due respect, and framed it in a way that he did not, and I do think we have to be able in this body to, to, to grant space for our colleagues to share their concerns, and not sort of then deduce that it is, it is, was political, because it was not, he, he was sharing, he was just sharing his concerns about a tree, I have no doubt that Director Abrika, in his decades of public service to this community, has protected hundreds of trees, and so, and, and so, I, again, I, I really do want to move on, but I do think we have to, 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 everything doesn't require a response, I do think we need to allow our colleagues to, to speak and say, and, 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 and share where they're at.
I don't think I gave everything a response, and also, I, I really take umbrage to be criticized for speaking, this is now about the third or fourth time, I think it's okay to disagree with someone and offer an alternate view, and that we don't need a lecture, and be told that we shouldn't do that, so with all due respect, I do not take back my statements, and I think it's fine to disagree and disagree respectfully, and that's it, move on, I don't really want to be criticized for that.
I, I didn't ask you to take back any of your statements, but, but what I said is, as, as a chair, I'm not gonna sit and let a colleague's comment be framed in a way that it was, it was not said or received in any, any way, but I do think.
Unless that colleague is me, I guess.
And, and I do think we need to, to move, to move on, so are, are there any other, we're still on Agenda Item 7, are there any other board announcement informational items, or requests?
Yes, one more.
I'm sorry, Director Pine?
Will staff, I, I take it we'll, we'll go investigate this situation?
We will, in a moment, I'll, I'll hand the mic to, to Kevin for some details, but this, I think, is one of those action items that staff can take to coordinate with the technical staff at our member agencies, to ensure that we are both coordinated on our actions around trees in the channel, and that we are communicating with each other and supporting each other as necessary, it may involve arborists, it may involve engineers, and it will certainly involve some communications among staff.
Okay, thanks, I don't know, Clerk Harris, if we did a public comment on, on board announcements, but if we didn't, we'll just open it up to public comment on, on Agenda Item 7.
Would anyone like to make a public comment on Agenda Item 7 at this time? I have no request for comment at this time.
Okay, thanks, so bringing it back to the, to the dais, I don't see any other desire to make a comment, and so then, we will, at this point, move on to closed session, and so we will move on to closed session, but not adjourn, right, because we will, we will return after this closed session, and closed session, I will take public comment on this closed session, 8A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, title Executive Director, after this closed session, we will come back into open session in these chambers, and, and then finish any, any, any needed business, but with that, I, I will call for public comment on closed session, Item A8A, which is, again, Public Employee Performance Evaluation.
Would anyone like to make public comment on Agenda Item 8A, Executive Director, Employee Performance Evaluation, Jerry Hearn?
Thank you very much, Jerry Hearn, a watershed resident and longtime observer of the JPA, I just want to say a couple of things about, I have no idea what you're needing to talk about, about the Executive Director, Margaret, but I just wanted to voice my own personal experiences with her, as I find her to be incredibly a, a great leader of staff, and of all the, and, and a gatherer of all the organizations, both, the, at both levels, at the board level and the staff, to get a lot of work done in a very short period of time, she's very transparent, she's one, does wonderful outreach, both, what shall I say, sort of planned and organized outreach, but her, the way that she, she greets you and meets you as a person is, is absolutely is very welcoming, and just make, and, and makes the JPA feel very warm and welcoming, which hasn't always been true in the past for a lot of different reasons, so I just want to add that in, that as a person who works a lot in communities, I see Margaret out there working in, in the community in other ways, but always, of course, representing the JPA, because that's her job, so I just want to tell you, I just really, really enjoy working with her, and I find her to be incredibly efficient and effective, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for that public comment.
I have no other request to speak at this time.
All right, thank you, Clerk Harris, okay, with that, we will, we will move on and to, to closed session. All right, thanks, bringing the JPA board back into open session from closed session at 5:06, and there are no reportable actions, and so that brings us to the end of Agenda Item 8, the closed session, and I think that we can adjourn, correct, all right, we, we are adjourned.